15th, 2025, Carter County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Clark, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our invitation will be led by Mr. D.J. Hunt.
Let's join together and pray. Gracious Assembly, Father, Lord, we love you tonight, God, Lord, for everything that you're doing. Now, but, Father, Lord, we pray tonight, God, Lord, that everything that is said and done in this meeting, God, Lord, will be in accordance to your will. Father, tonight, God, Lord, we ask you, Lord, that you'll just put a hedge of protection around our county, oh, God. Lord, let your grace and your, Lord, your hand of mercy, Lord, rest upon us all. Father, Lord, we will not fail to praise you, but we'll give you the glory, the honor, and the praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, D.J. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict with any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation. We're all good. I would like to have a moment of silence for the victims of 9/11 and Charlie Kirk, and then we'll begin our meeting. Okay. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. We got a light agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, sir. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add number, item number 8A, to amend the regular agenda for the Carter County Commissioners to approve the Carter County ABC Board travel policy to mirror the Carter County government travel policy.
Okay. Do we need a motion and second for that?
That is my motion.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Shin. All in favor? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, a second. I was going to state it, but we'll go with that.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Vice Chairman Mansfield. All in favor? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the consent agenda also. I would like to add on the consent agenda, item number 17, recognizing October 5th as Commercial Fishing Day in Carter County.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Commissioner Shin, seconded by Commissioner Waldrup. All in favor? All right. Next, we've got a little thanking to do. Mr. Larry Land has served the Carter County Board of Equalization and Review for over 20 years, appointed by Ms. Betty Bell back in '05, and then subsequently by Commissioner Mansfield many, many times. And Larry has also served on the Carter County Harbor Authority and cannot thank you enough for the Salvation Army. I know your big role with the Salvation Army and always when there was a hurricane, the Salvation Army was the first to show up and feed people for days on end until it was over and sometimes passed when it was over. And I kind of got a, I'm going to tell it, I probably ought not to tell it, but I'm going to tell it anyway. I called Larry one time. I said, "The Salvation Army's down here feeding people, and I see a lot of Cadillacs and a lot of nice cars." And Larry said, "Well, Chris, sometimes you had to feed a lot of greedy to get to the needy." So we want to present you this plaque.
I want to take a picture of all of us.
Thank you. Appreciate it, man.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You know, originally, the law was asked that the Commissioners--
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
The Commissioners were to amend the E and R board. And they got changed so you could appoint somebody to do it. I always tried to treat the taxpayers as if they were customers, or in your case, voters.
Well, you did a good job for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry.
Yes, you're excused. You've served enough. We thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Land.
Next, we have public comment. We only have three people signed up, so if you fail to sign up, just let me know. First off is Joseph Ann Smith.
I'm going to breathe. I'm not used to talking to officials.
Please breathe.
Yeah, I really do need a breath. I'm Joseph Ann Smith, too. My husband Gary died July 6th of this year, of Alzheimer's, in Bonita Springs, Florida. Why Bonita Springs, Florida? Morehead City had nothing to offer us as far as help, and I'll explain. There was no cognitive help for Gary and no respite help for me here. We've been residents of Carter County for over 25 years and property owners since the early 1990s over on the island at Emerald Isle. I hired a home health aide, and it cost, for those of you that don't know, it costs $30 to $50 an hour for an aide to come, and they require three consecutive hours, depending on the day of the week or the time of the day that you call it. The lady came to take care of Gary so that I could go to a doctor's appointment. She walked him down a block in our neighborhood at Brandyline. She fed him a sandwich out of my kitchen that I had prepared. And then she proceeded to sit down and get on her phone and watch TV while Gary slept in his chair. Florida has daycare, cognitive daycare. Antle County has daycare. Craven County has daycare. Why doesn't Carter County have a daycare? For Alzheimer's patients and those with dementia or other types of dementia, Alzheimer's is a form of dementia. There are over 70,000 residents in this county. Do you know that over 11%, and I'll say that one more time, 11% have been diagnosed with Alzheimer's or another form of dementia? That's pretty significant. I have a business plan. I have an experience in this field by attending a year and a half with Gary at his daycare volunteering. I have communicated with the New Bern Program, the one that's called Comeback Respite at Trinity Methodist Church. They are using a program called Respite for All that is out of Montgomery, Alabama. I'm working with them. It's a different program. It's not a daycare. It's called Respite Care. Does not have the requirements. I am working with them to organize Gary's clubhouse in Morehead City, North Carolina, to provide respite care for Carter County citizens. I would appreciate the board and the counties' help in this support. I would also ask you to go to respiteforall website and look at one of the videos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next was Gary McHale.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Gary McHale, and I'm chairman and founder of the Buddy McHale Scholarship for Children and First Responders. I'm here tonight to raise awareness and support for our foundation, not to ask y'all to mind. In 2017, while attending an award ceremony at West Carter High School where my son Buddy was receiving an award, I realized that the majority of the money given was based on grades and class rank. Well deserved, but it made me think of the rest of the class, and in particular, the kids whose parents may really struggle to provide the money for their kids to attend college. While I sat there watching the program, I started thinking of the kids of first responders. My company, ECI Communications, works with and supports first responders every day, in particular, Carter County first responders. When Buddy and I left the program that night, I began telling him about my thoughts and asked him what he thought. He hesitated for a minute and then said, "I think you should do it, Dad. Just do it." For the next few years, I started some research on 501(c)(3)'s, on scholarship programs, but I didn't act on it. I just did the research. We tragically lost Buddy in May of 2021, and the week after his death, sorry, it came to me that we had to do this in his honor. Since 2021, BMS has given out $150,000 to 34 kids of Carter County first responders. Our scholarships are for any form of higher education, four-year universities, community colleges, trade schools, any form of higher education. Our mission at BMS is to give back to those who give so much to our community. On October 18th, we're hosting our fourth annual Fins and Feathers Fundraising Dinner at the Crystal Coast Civic Center. There'll be live entertainment, dinner provided by the Friendly Market, a silent auction, rifles, games for the kids, and our keynote speaker this year is Dr. Pat McLaughlin. Please join us if you can and help us support Carter County first responders. I think I have about 30 seconds left, so if anybody has any questions, I'll go ahead and answer.
Mr. McHale, what time?
Five to eight.
Five to eight.
Yep.
Thank you. And I believe Commissioner Mansfield has some tickets for sale for that event. If anybody needs any tickets.
Gun raffle tickets and tickets for the event.
Yep. Thank you, Mark.
Just text me.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Very worthwhile and important work. Next, Mr. Brian Nicolo.
Good evening. My name is Brian Nicolo at 1420 Salter Path Road, Indian Beach. First of all, Ms. Smith, my condolences for your loss, and that's a wonderful cause. And Buddy McHale, it's inspiring, and I'm glad you shared it. Also, it brings to mind, we also lost Carter County James Mark Hamrick. I would want to say our prayers for that family during their difficult time as well. Tonight, I rise to speak on another matter of terrible loss. But I'll start with the following quote by Ronald Reagan, and he stated, "If fascism ever comes to America, it will come in the name of liberalism." Also, give this statement, not a direct quote, but by Malcolm X, who often stated that liberals, despite their claims of support for the black community, were a dangerous and deceitful element in the fight for black liberation. One thing in common that these individuals had, Ronald Reagan survived an assassination attempt, and we know Malcolm X was assassinated. Recently, we lost Charlie Kirk. He is now a martyr for his cause and his faith. Charlie Kirk was born 14 October 1993 in Arlington Heights, Illinois. Charlie Kirk founded the Turning Point USA in 2012 at 19 years of age. And if you remember what was happening in 2012, it was Obama's second term. And among many things, one thing was passed under him, and that was the Smith-Munt Modernization Act of 2012, which enabled our government to propagandize the American people. Many were already aware of the intense onslaught of propaganda and the cultural depravity upon our children through institutions, and some of us were not aware. But then there was a voice starting to rise above the insanity, and that 19-year-old young man named Charlie Kirk, he inspired people through his courage of faith, that's one thing he said he wanted to be remembered as, for his courage of faith, to stand up for their beliefs and convictions. Charlie Kirk wasn't killed because he spoke out. He was killed because our children were listening. He was killed because children realized they were empowered to stand on their morals and fight back against delusion and confusion. Yes, many of our children were lost during this onslaught and their bodies and minds damaged. They were sold alive, but Charlie showed them that they can be healed. Remember during the Summer of Love when protesters were lecturing the world on, "It was time to have a conversation"? Remember that mantra being repeated while they were burning, looting, and killing, the result of 25 people dead and over $2 billion of damage? Remember how the news broadcasts instructed us not to petition our government, not to attend churches, but they condoned the mob that was burning, and they called it mostly peaceful protest? And if you remember the picture behind them, while they were saying mostly peaceful protest, things were burning down. However, there was one voice willing to stand up and have that conversation that they called for, who was going into the hostile areas to have an open and peaceful dialogue and debate. He subjected himself and his family to the vitriol and the ire of the opposing ideas. However, Charlie Kirk never wavered. He faced the anger, and he responded with grace, often with gospel. He always encouraged his audience to respect and to be courteous of his dissenters. One thing Martin Luther King said, a quote, "A riot is the voice of the unheard," and we see that's largely the legacy of the left. However, Charlie Kirk inspired vigils, which are going on nationwide right now, and these vigils are the voice of the faithful, and they are of grace, peace, and unity. That is part of his legacy that he's left us as a 31-year-old young man with a wife and children. So to honor the life and legacy and the martyrdom of Charlie Kirk, I ask anyone who is available and is inspired to join me this Friday, right here on the courthouse steps at 7:00 PM. And we're going to have, in Carter County, our vigil. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nicolo. Next, we are going to have Nick Wilson present the Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month for July, August, and September.
Thank you guys for having me. Good evening. Tonight, we're here again to recognize the Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month recipients for the third quarter of 2025. This award honors the spirit of someone who always went above and beyond, and it shines a light on those who do the same for Carter County. We're proud to celebrate three individuals who have made a real difference in our community. We're going to begin with our July Honoree, Michelle Giblin, Nursing Supervisor at the Carter County Health Department. Michelle leads with consistency, compassion, and a clear sense of purpose. She creates a positive environment that encourages collaboration and brings out the best in our team. As a nursing supervisor, she oversees clinical nursing operations, supports the nursing staff, and ensures patient care meets high standards. She keeps the clinic running smoothly while also planning for long-term improvements. From refining workflows to solving billing and coding challenges, she approaches each task with focus and follow-through. She also steps in to support other departments when needed, always looking for ways to make things work better across the board. Michelle's dedication to the people we serve is just as strong. She treats every client with respect, kindness, and care. Her advocacy work goes beyond the clinic walls, connecting people with resources that might not otherwise access. Her leadership in the Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, which is a state and federally funded program that provides free or low-cost breast and cervical cancer screenings to eligible women who are uninsured, underinsured, or have low income, is a standout example. In the last funding cycle, 66 uninsured women received screenings through this program, and Michelle's efforts even secured extra funding to support an additional resident in need. She strengthens this department every day by leading with integrity and setting the right example. So congratulations, Michelle. We're lucky to have you. So at this time--
Well, think about that.
So our next, our August Honoree is Stacy Smith, Administrative Assistant in the Public Buildings Department. Since joining the county, Stacy has been a driving force in the department. She started by managing mail and quickly showed the skill, creativity, and dedication that earned her a promotion. Stacy handles sensitive and confidential information with care, manages P cards, does procurement cards, codes invoices, and always finds the best prices to save taxpayer dollars. She comes up with practical, sometimes clever, solutions that make life easier for customers, technicians, and leadership alike. She makes fast, accurate decisions, keeping the county's best interests in mind and navigating day-to-day challenges. Her positive attitude and teamwork stand out. Stacy's approachable, quick with a smile, and always ready to help coworkers. She communicates clearly across departments, keeping things running smoothly, and guides staff on proper procurement procedures and best practices. Whether assisting colleagues, supporting county operations, or serving the public, Stacy's attention to detail, professionalism, and willingness to go above and beyond set a strong example for everyone around her. So at this time, congratulations, Stacy, and thank you for all that you do. And finally, our September Honoree is Robert Huff, Information Technology Specialist. Robert's skills, dedication, and teamwork have made a real difference for our staff and the county. In his role, he ensures technology systems run reliably, supports staff with hardware and software issues, manages network resources, and helps maintain secure operations. He addresses IT challenges quickly and often goes beyond his normal duties to keep operations running smoothly. During Hurricane Erin last month, Robert played a key role in setting up workstations and supporting operations in the EOC. His efforts ensured staff and technology and resources needed to monitor the storm and maintain continuity of county operations. He's always ready to assist colleagues. He responds properly, brings a positive can-do attitude, and fosters a collaborative work environment. He notices what needs attention and takes initiative, whether troubleshooting IT problems, assisting with equipment, or preventing small issues from becoming larger ones. His reliability and proactive approach save time and resources and help the team perform at its best. Please join us in congratulating Robert Huff for his outstanding contributions and dedication to Carter County. All right, I got something. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate y'all.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing for the approval to submit a grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for CCATS program for fiscal year 2027. Do we need a motion to go into public hearing now?
Motion. Go into public hearing?
Or do we get the presentation?
You do the presentation first.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. So this is our annual time in front of you to let you guys see what we are applying for from NC DOT and FTA for funding for the upcoming fiscal year. It's all the usual grants that we do, some operations funding, some administrative funding, funding for new vehicles, funding for the Down East Express, which is the CONCPT you see in the packet, and then also funding for our Travelers A's program. And I can answer any questions you guys have before we go into public--
Motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
So move. All in favor? Is there anybody, members of the public, who would like to speak about this grant application? Hearing none. Seeing none. Is there a motion to close public hearing? So moved. Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor? All right. Out of public hearing, is there a motion to--
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the submission of the grant applications for North Carolina DOT for the fiscal year-- for the fiscal year 2027, Grant Number 5310, 5311, Capital 5312, and the Travelers Aid, and to authorize the county manager to sign and submit the required grant documents.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor? Thank you, Patrick. Excellent job, as always.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You run a great program. Thank you.
I see your vehicles everywhere. Good job.
Okay. Next, we have the manager's report.
Now, the AA.
AA is...
Yep, AA is going to be to Carteret County Board of Commissioners to approve the Carteret County ABC Board travel policy to mirror the Carteret County Government travel policy.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That is in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Waldrup. All in favor?
Any discussion?
No discussion. All in favor? That's good. Next, we have the manager's report.
Thank you so much. If I may, I did want to provide some information to our first speaker, and we are very sorry for your loss. It's very difficult. It is something that, over time, as we build our senior services program, we do hope to also have adult daycare. We made some changes and we're really going strong now. And Dr. Williams, who's sitting over there, he also helps manage our senior services. Our director, Shelley, is out tonight, but she's doing an outstanding job, and we're going to get there someday if the Board of Commissioners would like to have us move in that direction. That is something that she could help get the grant funding for, okay?
Yeah, you're doing. We're going to have that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that. As far as our comments tonight from me, it has been a really, really busy week, but I'm going to keep it brief because it seems to be the pattern of the evening. So I'm going to keep it nice and brief. We did get notification from the National Weather Service today, but this is not something that's probably going to make anybody blink as just a weather report because it's a coastal flood warning. It just means that the News River and the Pamlico may be getting, starting late tonight, I guess, through Tuesday evening, some water backed up and some coastal flooding. And a lot of it is impacting the Outer Banks just north of us. But just keep that in mind if you need to care for your boats or your other things in your yard, that you might have a little bit of flooding. And we don't expect anything too major. And I don't think, Merle, we got any other updates on that, did we? Okay, sounds good. And then the other thing I wanted to do is let everybody know our library program did have their summer reading program, and we got the data for that. And it sounds wonderful. It was a great success this year. We had hundreds of residents of all ages, and our participants collectively read over 280,000 minutes this past summer. And there were well-attended events that discussed these books and celebrated the wonderful, now somewhat old-timey, practice of reading books. That is just one of the best things on earth. So we really appreciate Dorothy, and we thank all of the staff and volunteers that go the extra mile to make the summer really special for kids while they're out and also for all of the retirees and everyone else in our community. And unless you have questions, I think I'm going to stop it right there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have appointments. The first one is the Aging Planning Board and Regional Aging Advisory Committee. Mr. Clint Lewis to a three-year term. All in favor of Mr. Lewis? Next is the Carteret County Beach Commission, Commissioner from Cape Carteret, Courtney Barnhill. Term would expire 1/31/2028. All in favor of Ms. Barnhill? Next is the Carteret County Public Library Board, Ms. Allison Whitlow. Reappointment to a two-year term. All in favor of Ms. Whitlow? Next is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Judge Deborah Massey. Reappointment to District Court Judge Dexter Nee, two-year term. All in favor of Ms. Massey? Next is the Newport Board of Adjustment, ETJ, Mr. Dwight Turner. Reappointment to a three-year term. All in favor of Mr. Turner? And that's all of the appointments. Next is Commissioner Comet. Commissioner Waldrup?
Good evening. Thanks to everybody that came out and particularly to recognize our last quarter Employees of the Month. Michelle Giblin, Stacy Smith, and Robert Huff. I have firsthand relationship with Michelle Giblin with the work that she's done in the last quarter, and it's been life-changing. So we appreciate her in particular, and Stacy and Robert Huff, we appreciate you. Ms. Smith, I understand I am a resident of Carteret County, and my dad also was diagnosed in 1998 with Alzheimer's. He passed in February of 2004, complications of Alzheimer's, at home here at Emerald Isle. And it takes a village, and I understand the wear and tear it takes on the caregiver. So my heart goes out to you. And finally, we would like to recognize and I thank Brian for mentioning and reminding us in a very tumultuous week, Mr. Mark Hamrick, who passed from the North Carolina Marine Fisheries trying to save a coworker. So God bless him as a local Atlantic Beach resident and his family, and thank him for his service in perpetuity because it made a difference in somebody else's life when it came down to the very end. So I appreciate everybody being here, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldrup. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to congratulate our employees, Michelle Giblin, Stacy Smith, and Robert Huff for great work working for the county and the great achievement they've had for this award. My heart also goes out to the victims of 9/11 and the family of Charlie Kirk. Terrible thing that happened. My heart goes out to him and prayers for that family for comfort. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to keep it brief tonight to stay within the spirit of our meeting so far and just echo the same responses that we heard from the two previous commissioners that spoke. I'd like to add a thank you and congratulations to Mr. Larry Land. He's a good man. He's a model citizen. It's of high regard. I hold him in very high regard. Ms. Smith, I can also empathize with you. My mother suffers from dementia, and my daddy and I had to be her primary caregivers for a very long time. And I appreciate the spirit that you're bringing to a daycare service. That would have been something that would have lifted, at least temporarily, a heavy burden off of our family. And I really do appreciate you coming out and advocating for that and intend to support anything that the senior center wants to move forward as far as an opportunity for that. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, sir. I too would like to add, I don't know Ms. Giblin or Ms. Smith personally, but thank you for your service. But I do know the gentle giant, Mr. Huff, thank you for all that you do for us. And you know, I had personal interaction with him at the IT department and do appreciate all that you do for the county. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Shin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just follow the same sentiment with appreciation for the Employees of the Month. Ms. Giblin, Ms. Smith, Mr. Huff, thank you for your dedication to the county and the work you do. And just much appreciated. So just wanted to say that. And I'd like to also, he's gone, but thank Mr. Land for the years of dedication he's had for the county on the Board of Adjustment and the Harbor Authority. He's been a real active member of the community for a long time. So has and still does a lot of stuff kind of behind the scenes. So very prominent member in the community. So thank him for his years of service. And also, I'll just share with you, Ms. Smith, I too, my mother suffers from Alzheimer's, and I was unaware. I was appreciative of the information you gave. I was unaware that Craven County had a specialized Alzheimer's treatment. I don't know if it would benefit my mom right now. She is actually not actually ambulatory. So it may not be, but the effect of the actual disease is the same. So I think this board will do what we can to support your effort. So thank you for sharing. And I thank Mr. Chairman. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shin. Vice Chairman Mansfield?
Oh, boy. I said in brevity. I don't know if I can go there.
Do we need to start?
I'll take all the time you guys yield, and I'm going to try to take full advantage of it.
Do we need to start the three-minute timer?
I'd like to first off talk about the Buddy McKeel Scholarship. I've served on that board for over three years. I personally coached Buddy when he was playing basketball. And just, we did it to honor his legacy, just like Charlie Kirk left us at too early of an age. And just what a great person. His father had a great idea with a few dumb friends and who didn't understand that you couldn't go out and work hard and make things happen. Despite all that, we're making things happen. You know, I don't know if everybody caught that, but $154,000 in scholarships have been given over the last three years, and not to your valedictorian and your salutatorian, but to the child that wants to go to the community college and learn to be a contractor, or the girl who wants to be a nurse but can't afford to go to ECU or another nursing school at this time. Just a great thing. And how can we not, I mean, help? The first responders do so much for our community on a daily basis, you know, whether it's the nurses or the ENTs or the firefighters and the police officers. And in today's world, they don't get the respect that they deserve. And I think that needs to change. And I think we all can do that by helping and giving back to their children, for one, but there's a lot of other ways you can do. Just thank them. If you're in line and drive through and you see one of those guys behind you, buy their stuff. Do a good deed. Be nice to people. Love one another. We're a world full of hate these days, and it's actually, it's not good. I mean, that's not the way it's supposed to be. But that's a great scholarship. There's a lot of great scholarships. Give back to the community. I don't care what shape or form it's in. I'd like for it to be the Buddy McKeel Scholarship, the Garden Club, the Rotary, wherever. Be a better person. Remember what John F. Kennedy said. You need to do what's best for the country, not for you. And that's paraphrasing, but that's the bottom line. Try to make the world a better place. We're all going to leave here. We're here for a finite amount of time. And try to make the world better. With that, you know, Ms. Smith came to talk tonight, and I told her there were several of us on this board who've been affected by the disease of Alzheimer's or dementia, and I didn't realize it was as wildly affected as it has been. My good friend, Commissioner Kavanaugh, would probably be sitting up here with me, still serving, if his wife did not have a form of dementia or Alzheimer's. And he, with along with some help, is her wife's primary caregiver. You heard Commissioner Shin, Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Waldrup. My mother-in-law dealt with it. My father-in-law and my wife were the primary caregiver. It takes it out of you. God bless anybody out there going through what all these people have been through. And I want to try to help in any way we can. I was encouraged to hear what the county manager had to say. I texted all of you guys one of the YouTube videos from Respite, Respite, however you want to pronounce it. It's spelled R-E-S-P-I-T-E. But there's a video on your phone I've already sent to you. I hope we can make a difference. You know, we try to do what little we can. You know, Jamie Hicks Long, what a great individual. And I'm so glad that her memory lives on through these awards every month. And I love to recognize Michelle, Stacy, and Robert for the exemplary job you do. But for all the other employees of Carteret County, I thank you, and I try to thank you at most meetings. And I appreciate the hard work you do, the efforts you go to, to make this county a better place. And like Mr. Land said, we try to treat people like they're customers. We can't make everybody happy all the time, but we'll try to help you the best that we can. There are governments, whether it's the municipalities or the county, we're governed by state statute, by laws that we're required to follow. And sometimes we would love to help everyone, but sometimes our hands are tied. But we thank those employees who work for Carteret County Government. We appreciate you more than you will ever know, and I don't think you hear that enough. So thank you. The others that, you know, Mark Hamrick was close to retirement, and he was out doing his job in an accident going to try to save a friend. He drowned. Here he was trying to save someone else and gave his own life. That's what I wish for everybody in this country. Help other people. Be kind. We don't always have to agree. I mean, I know Kymer and, you know, Mr. Nicolau out there. I mean, I know y'all don't have to like us because we don't have hair, but you know, we like y'all when y'all do. I mean, it's okay to like people when you're different. It's okay to disagree. You know, it doesn't matter if I'm tall and you're short. I don't not like you because you're short. You know, we can have differences, whether they're religious differences, political differences, science differences, whatever your beliefs may be. That's what the country of America was founded on. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And for anybody to try to deny that from anyone is criminal. Just because we don't agree doesn't mean we have to be ugly to one another. And God forbid to kill another person. We kill each other to protect people. And that should be the last line of defense, not to take people out because you have a political difference. I'm ashamed that somebody in our country would do that type of thing. You know, I'm trying to stay off my soapbox, but I'll try to end it there. But, you know, we recognize recreational fishing too, but commercial fishing has such a history and a heritage in our county. And for the farming industry and the commercial fishing industry to be tried to be put out of business, that's what puts food on our table and has put the money in the pockets of a lot of our forefathers so that some of us local people could be here. I thank those guys for getting up and going out every day. I mean, they're out there whether, not, I'm a fair-weather fisher person. They go out no matter what and risk their life, and they can be like Mark and drown. I mean, it's a tough industry, and unfortunately, it's probably a dying industry. But anything we can do to try to help, I don't like pitting people against one another. We just want to be supportive and help people. And a lot of times out in the news or on social media, you read stuff out there, and it makes comments about people that serve. Well, I'm just going to say this and leave you with this thought. If you constantly talk bad about people and are ugly, who's going to ever want to sit in these positions and serve our communities or our country? I mean, God forbid, who would want to be President of the United States and deal with all of that? So I mean, try to be respectful for one another. Try to love one another. And try to make, wherever you live, I don't care what county, what state, if you're in the United States of America, try to leave it a better place than you were born in. God bless you all and have a good evening.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Mansfield. Ms. Smith, I too... Right. I do sympathize with you and empathize with you. I would like Dr. Williams maybe have a chat with you after the meeting and see what we can do to provide that service through our senior center or however the best way to deal with that is. Thank you for coming and bringing that to our attention. The Buddy McKeel Foundation Get Together, October 18th, that's going to be at the Civic Center.
16.
I wrote it down the first time.
Yeah, I got it written right there, too.
Certainly, that's a worthwhile organization and doing great things for children, the first responders, helping them further their education. So everyone that can attend that, please do that. Tomorrow, September 16th, is going to be our second meeting of the Coastal County Coalition. It's about 19, 20 counties. We've... It's about nineteen, twenty counties we've formed together to fight for our commercial fishing industry. And we're gonna be meeting at one o'clock at the Civic Center and hopefully, uh, get organized fully and come up with the bullet points we're gonna submit to our legislatures and, uh, some of the things that we're gonna ask for to put things in place to, uh, hopefully prolong the life of commercial fishermen up and down, uh, the coast of North Carolina. To Mr. Larry Land, uh, many, uh, many years of service on the Board of Equalization and Review. Presently, he still serves on the, uh, Harbor Authority. And you see the situation he was in with the oxygen, and he's still taking care of his wife who has dementia, I believe, at home. So that's a, a whole, certainly, uh, just taking on him. So we, another example of why that service is so, so desperately needed. With any, is there anything else to come before the board? All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shin, seconded by Commissioner Waldrup. All in favor? Thank you for coming.